We good? Okay. All right, we're live streaming now, we're calling the work session to order. Um, we have agenda items listed for discussion. Agenda item A, ordinance two thousand twenty-four oh one to annex approximately point nine nine plus or minus acres of real property located at fifty-one thirty-four Calhoun Memorial Highway in Easely, Pickens County, being shown and designated um as tax map number five zero three nine eighteen twenty-two nine zero three one with a zoning designation of general commercial. Is there any discussion, questions?
This is second reading, I believe.
It is, yes.
Yes, sir, second reading. It's the one outline on the map, and that was, if you remember, that was the donut hole that they requested to be annexed.
There's no questions? Move on to the next agenda item, which will be the second reading of ordinance two zero two four oh two to establish a six-month moratorium to temporarily suspend development and construction of new single-family residential subdivisions or new multifamily residential subdivisions pending amendments to zoning ordinances and land use regulations. So this will be a second reading for that, so any discussion, any questions that you guys want to go over for that? Nothing? Moving right along. Okay, next we'll have the first reading of ordinance two zero two four oh three to rezone approximately point five two plus or minus acres of real property located at seven forty-five Rock Springs Road in Easely, being shown and designated as tax map number five zero three eight one one five five zero one six five from neighborhood commercial to general commercial. This will be a first reading. Any discussion?
Well, at, at, at a risk of showing my ignorance, how does that change the property use? That's been a gymnasium and a dance studio. What are they looking to do in the future?
It would not change the, the use itself, it, it, it could, I mean, it-
It could change.
It, it would not change the current use. It could potentially, it could potentially change the future use. And then it also opens up the ability for people adjacent to it to get rezoned commercial. The main reason why they did is they wanted a sign that had a digital readout on it. We didn't, we, we staff-
My understanding is that could have been a variance request.
Could have been a variance, which we can use as a legal um aspects of, of the variance to say you're going to have the sign on it during different times cannot, you know, be- put a lot more emphasis on what they cannot do. So we do recommend denial.
Excuse me, was the applicant, um, was it recommended to the applicant to apply for a variance?
No, no.
Okay.
It was, it was brought in, staff brought it in, put it on the agenda, and then it was ran through the planning commission.
Does staff not review application?
This one came in while, yeah.
That's okay. Thank you.
So the note there is, staff does not recommend to rezone this one.
Staff does not.
Does not.
While the request was made, and we allow people to come, do the request, it was misinterpreted by, we believe it was misinterpreted after the meeting was over, it was misinterpreted by the planning commission, and now they understand. So denial of the request is recommended by city council.
Well, in, the way I understood some of the constituents in that area that reached out to me, neighborhood commercial has certain things that protect the neighborhood. Changing it to general commercial, if I understand this correctly, means that in perpetuity it's general commercial and it's still in the neighborhood, and it, it gives not just this owner for a sign, but future owners the ability to do things in that area that are general commercial, not neighborhood commercial, which is the concern, I believe.
A higher density, a higher density commercial?
Yes.
Use. It negates the, the reason why we made it neighborhood commercial to begin with.
And it could always be changed to general commercial later.
Yes.
It can't, can't back up ten years from now.
If, if that area warrants it, it does not warrant it right now.
Well, then the question is, can it be reversed? If we vote to go general commercial, it cannot be reduced back to neighborhood commercial ever.
It can be.
Well, it could be.
Yeah.
Okay.
But the damage is already done.
Right.
Right.
Any other questions about that one, discussion? So that'll come up tonight for the first reading. Okay, um, next would be the first reading of ordinance two zero two four oh four to provide for the adoption of a city annual operating budget, its execution at effect for the fiscal period of July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirty, twenty twenty-five.
And we'll, we'll go through a presentation, um, when you go-
When we finish reading?
Finish reading, a couple of more items.
Okay, so we'll have a presentation immediately following the item reading. Is there any, I guess, we can hold remarks to that then. Um, next, we're going to do a first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four oh five to name the three Phil's complexes, Field One, located inside of J.B. Redd Owens Recreational Complex in honor of Thomas Greg Powell for his exemplary service of over thirty years to the City of Easely Parks and Recreation as Director. Any discussion or questions? Okay, next we have-
Mayor Talbert, I have the greatest respect for Mr. Powell. Just based on things that have happened in the past, I have concerns about honoring someone who is still with us because they might do things that surprise you, like Earl Morris Jr. Not that I'm opposed to naming this in honor of Mr. Powell, but uh, Highway one fifty-three used to be the Earl E. Morris Jr. Highway. Thank you.
Mm-hmm, anybody else?
I thought Reagan retired, is he still working?
He's still living.
Oh.
He meant with us as in alive.
I still mind him.
Okay, um, any more discussion about that? Resilient two twenty-two four oh three to accept certain roads from Easely Town Homes Incorporated into the City of Easely Roads Network. Any questions or discussion?
Where is that?
It's, where is it in our packet, or where is it?
Where is it in our season?
Mario, can you do a quick, or?
Right there on the left.
Have they finished, have they finished the road?
The, the, the road's finished.
Like a second pass ball?
Everything's, everything's completed. The city, the city engineer and city DPW director went out, walked-
You're-
We're, we're, it's acceptable, yes, sir.
It's Brook Lane Court, Sprouls Lane, Watford Place, and Sly Way, it's the name of the four of them. They'll be the first.
What's the advantage of bringing those roads into the city?
The, we make an, it's not on. The city makes an agreement when they bring it in, that we will accept the roadway system?
The, the advantages that we maintain with, for the city of these projects.
Well, I have a problem with bringing in more roads when we can't maintain it. There seems to be no money budgeted to-
The road's in good shape.
Well, in the future, they may not be.
That's your prerogative.
I have a question. Now, Mario, you and I've had a discussion about, um, without identifying the development.
Sure.
Um, you, we were talking about a neighborhood that you have been in discussions with HOA about their roads.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I guess the concern, and I know you don't have this crystal ball, but that development is not that old.
Correct.
But they started having problems, and now, um, I don't, do we have the roads in that development?
The, you're talking about Meadow Ridge?
Yes.
The roads, the roads that had problems from construction.
Okay.
After, during construction, the curbs were basically beat up. They have since fixed those curbs.
Okay, was it the contractor, or was it?
It was the original developer circumvented our regulations by deeding the roadway to the homeowners association instead of to the City of Easely.
Okay.
During that time, we, what the city does is it inspects the roadways, specifically the curb. The curb is, 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 it was cracked up. They came back and fixed the curb to our satisfaction.
Okay.
Now, that road is, is ready to come in also.
And so the question that I have with this particular road, because there was another roadway that came before council sometime last year, and people were talking about how the, I know I'm not going to get all this right, the drain pipes or the metal water lids, clear that- Well, I didn't think it was a cover.
It was, it was, they had some questions about the sewer manhole covers.
That was it.
Right.
And they were sticking up so far above the ground. And this was an issue that came before council, um, and if I recall, I think we accepted those roads.
The roads were accepted.
Yes. I have concerns also about accepting those roads, so you're saying that when that development was presented to the city, which was a number of years ago, how, how long ago do you know when that plan started?
Meadow Ridge?
No, 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 not that one, the one we're talking about now, we're looking at these roads. You can guess.
I don't think it's in here. It says July twenty-eighth, is it twenty eighteen, does that sound right?
Yes.
Dated July seventeen twenty eighteen, recorded July twenty-four twenty eighteen, indeed booked.
I'm trying to remember the name of the roadway, right off, right, right off.
And we're, here, asking us to take the roads six years later.
On, on, you're talking about Meadow Ridge?
No, I'm talking about this project right here, the one that we're talking about, I've moved on.
That, that one was probably three years old at most.
Okay, this one is three years old, okay.
No, this one, yeah, this one's two years old.
That's, this one is three years old?
This one here.
It's three years old, okay. And so the question-
Now, that's, that's to the date, that was, it was designed and accepted by the city, the design plan was accepted by the city.
Okay.
Yeah, typically, sometimes it takes longer.
So you're, you're saying that, um, y'all are, um,
We, we have respected the roadway.
Confident that these roads are in the proper condition that they need to be in, and the contractors follow the proper specifications, et cetera?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
I have a question, what happens to the roads if we don't take them in?
Daniel?
Pardon me?
Well, I, um, we should have, I'm, I'm, I don't know for sure, but do we have, you mentioned we have an agreement with the developer whereby- And do we bond the work so that we hold the bond over their head if they-
They, they, the, the bond is, the roadways are accepted.
Okay, so I just wanted to, I'm not going to answer the question directly, I will, I will answer the question, but, you know, the, the way we make sure these developers are held accountable to meet our standards is bonding the work through performance bonds, and so we have the ability to call a bond due if they don't perform road specifications. But if we never accepted them, I think we would be violating our agreement with the developer to accept it if they meet the road specifications. Uh, but if they, they would, in this case, they would remain private. And that, and to Mario's point earlier, I mean, and from the fire chief's standpoint, you know, they, we've got to keep these roads where the fire service vehicles could get in and out and service-
Right.
Emergency, ride emergency service, that's why it's very important that we have these roads meet city road standards.
And how long is the bond for?
Until they complete the project, according to the plans. It has to, if they, we'd have to, I'd have to look at the individual bond itself, bond forms vary, but if they don't meet the completion requirements under the bond, then it, they have to renew it until they meet the standards.
The, the project has been completed. There is a one-year warranty on the road, not standard.
Mario, that one year starts when we accept them?
Yes, sir.
Date of acceptance, okay.
Any more discussion or questions?
Mayor Talbert, I noticed the deed, the proposed deed in front of us is signed by Daniel E. Youngblood Jr. Robinson Law Firm has rendered legal services to other Youngblood companies in the past. I've checked my records, I've checked on this particular development. Robinson Law Firm has not rendered any legal services to Easely Town Homes Inc. in connection with this property, and I confirmed that by a personal telephone call to Daniel Youngblood last week.
Okay, thank you for stating that. Anything else?
Please, I'm, sorry, Mayor Talbert. Um, I'd like to make a motion that the council discuss the impact fees based on the email that I received from Dan, Daniel Hughes. I know we're under a time crunch if we want to increase those fees.
You're making a motion to discuss?
Mm-hmm, it's not on the agenda.
Is that?
We, we couldn't add something to the agenda at this point unless it's an emergency matter, I don't, would not think it qualifies under the emergency procedure under FOIA. But I do believe, uh, that you could, you, you know, it sort of falls in line with your, your budget presentation, you may be able to discuss it then.
During the public hearing floor, I guess, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so-
Mayor Talbert, you, the work session agenda has always included kind of a catch-all category at the end of matters to be discussed by staff or council that might have gotten left off, but-
Well, are we going to do that before, after, he's, we're going to do a budget presentation as part of the work session, do we want to do that before, after?
It could be part of, as someone suggested, but if, if we could include that kind of a catch-all category on the agenda that would allow other things to be brought up.
How do you prefer to do that before, after the? Want to do the catch-all now, you want to do the catch-all after the?
Might be a different matter to vote on something, I don't know that we can vote on something that's on the agenda, but I'd like to find a way to discuss it if somebody wants to.
We can discuss it now.
Okay, so, is there any?
As long as it's okay.
Are you talking about like a council concerns, it used to be like a council concerns, council's able to-
Uh, department reports, anybody that had a-
Miss Laney's.
Miss Laney's at the end of our work session, I know we did not put it in here, and it is, I know what you're talking about, it's normally at the end where we have, is there any department updates that were not in our reports, anything that's an emergency situation that needs to be brought up in the end?
Yeah, from, it used to be project updates by staff.
Yeah, if there's anything that was not in our packet that we need to be made aware of, that kind of thing. Mr. Robinson, did you have anything in particular?
But, well, I thought that might be a way to bring, to address what Donna brought up.
I think it's, I think, I appreciate your reference, I think you should, if you put a council concerns section on the work session to cover that, but I think you're safe, Donna, uh, Ms. Rainey, to bring it up during the budget.
Okay.
Raise your concern, whatever topic or issue you want to have raised. Because I think it falls in line with the budget, yes.
During this presentation, I'm getting ready to start.
Right, correct.
Okay, so let's go into our budget presentation. Mr. Couch?
All right, here, uh, this is a presentation on the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five proposed budget. It is a balanced budget, if, uh, everyone remembers from the work session, a couple of months ago, we were eight point nine million dollars out of balance from all the requests to the, uh, predicted revenues. We were able to cut about six and a half to seven million out of it, and we were able to, uh, get the projected revenues increased, and then to balance it, we have a, um, three mil recommended increase.
And for the record, I guess for the video, that is one mil less than what was posted in the newspaper.
Yes, ma'am, one mil less. These are the categories. You'll note, um, general fund is the only one that the millage pertains to. All the rest of them have their own rules and funding sources. We'll talk about these as we go forward. For personnel, we, uh, just changed to, from Etna back to, uh, Blue Choice. That saved us, in the current year we're in, we went, uh, we're at seven percent higher versus twelve percent was what Etna was going to charge us. And so for next year, it's going to be ten percent higher versus whatever Etna was going to charge us, which is, we think around, I think it was fifteen to twenty percent for Etna. So this is, it's a better health plan, we think, and it's at a cheaper price. Retiree health, this is all our retirees, twenty of them, that's the cost. We have a, in the budget, four percent minimum COLA for everyone, and if, uh, if you have experience, we're, based on our class and compensation study that we did last year, up to ten percent for experience pay. Christmas bonus is the same, retirement, our fees to the South Carolina Retirement System and Police Officer Retirement Systems are the same for employees and for the city, so no increase there. We have five positions in the budget, three new firefighters, they requested six, we funded three, one deputy director of parks and rec, and one assistant administrator if the, um, change of form of government passes the referendum, and that would start next year. Property tax base, we get that from number from the county, the hundred and thirty-four million you see there. The, uh, fire protection fees are going up two point five percent. This budget is proposed on seventy-two point five mils, that's one mil less than was advertised in the paper. Three mils comes out to three hundred ninety-two thousand dollars and change. And we also propose doubling the, uh, stormwater fee from thirty to sixty dollars per, uh, equivalent residential unit, which is five thousand square feet of, of impervious service. This is per, per resident, and as we've talked before, um, some of the, some of the businesses, large, larger business areas were not being charged correctly. We've had the Appalachian Council of Governments come in and talk to us, or they did a flyby, flyover, looking at all the areas, and they've, uh, given us some feedback. As of last Friday, as we got the latest on some of the areas that were only charging thirty dollars, we should have been charging quite a bit more, so we've got those numbers, we're going through them now. And, uh, we'll update when we, when we bill these, and these are billed on the tax, um, invoice from the county. We'll, we'll update those numbers for those businesses, so that, that should get everyone paying what they should be paying based on the five thousand square feet. Grass clippings cart is, uh, going up to thirty to thirty-five is what we recommend. Going back to the, to the stormwater fee also, another reason we doubled it, thirty dollars, we're just barely paying enough to, uh, pay off the bond that we borrowed from a few years ago. This, the staff gets inundated, I'm sure y'all do get inundated with questions and, and comments about stormwater, and this will help us actually address some of those problems that we get, um, and y'all get questions about. And then, uh, we have some fees that we're changing in the planning development as a result of, uh, for the past two months, we've had, or three months, we've had, um, contract, um, business, business, building official in town, doing a lot of our inspections, and they, they do this at several other cities, the, these are recommendations that they see, our fees are too low, we should be back in line or get in line with some of the other, uh, surrounding cities, so some of these fees are changed to, as a result of that.
Is there any information on when the current fees, not these, when the current fees were implemented, and so we're, we have some kind of idea how long these fees, how long it's been that nobody has paid any attention to modifying these rates?
I don't know that off the top of my head, we can research it and find out.
I think that's important for the public to know.
Well, I was approached with someone, the stormwater runoff fee was twenty-eight bucks for a long, long, long time, and just not too far back went up two dollars. And they were stroking out that it was going to double, this is someone that's got a commercial. And it didn't take much to be five thousand.
Right.
You're going to more than, you're going to double the, and that, no problem with the nonprofits, since they're not paying taxes anyway, the hospital and churches can pay, but some of us have got small apartment complexes, Walmarts and people, and that's going to be a big number, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
If it's only five thousand, that's, that's, they're already being a big number, and you're going to double it all. You know, I might have planned that myself.
Well, I think the problem is that it hasn't been changed in all these years, and instead of doing it incrementally, which it should have been, if the city had been run as a business, but it wasn't, and, because I believe Mayor Talbert mentioned it at the last meeting, or some meeting we were in attendance, um, that the millage rate for years had not been increased.
Oh, yeah, for years.
And so that's the problem-
Twelve.
That, yes, twelve years, so that's the problem that-
Longer.
That this council-
Longer, yes, longer.
Yes, this council is facing, and so we're having to clean, clean up everything on, on our channel. So I think it's important that we get, um, and change is difficult, but this is what happens when things weren't, um, attended to properly.
Well, looking back and making that kind of comment's not going to really help us out tomorrow when these folks are having a stroke, when they find out that's happening. It goes all the way back to Bill Carr that went sixteen years without raising any money.
Well, they can't call, they can't call Mr. Carr.
That's right, saying that's not, not very productive.
Well, they just need to understand that it hasn't been addressed for years.
But they're only going to see, I don't know, I don't know what the parking lot at Publix pays, but, uh, they will see a big number, I'll see a big number. And I agree with you, they, they, our county gave some of these apartments that are in these mills and all some tax breaks that, that I'm not getting. I have to write a check for, so, but I had one hand me on the phone, parking out back a minute ago, over that right there, and, uh, Lord, I don't want to talk to him again, but, uh-
Hope he's not watching.
Hope he's not watching.
I said, I hope he's not watching.
Oh, well, he very well, he's, you know, he's a friend of mine, but my point is, that's a big jump to, to go and double that, and we were all thinking it was on ten thousand square feet units, not five, so it's even more, it's going to be even more than I thought, but-
Yes, sir, and we checked the prices of car, you know, surrounding areas, and Eddie can correct me if I'm wrong, but this was still going to be lower than most, I know Clemson is seventy-two dollars a, a, a year.
Oh, are they?
They are.
Per unit?
Per five thousand, yes, sir.
But they are, they're also way up there on that millage too.
They are.
We're afraid of, so.
They are.
They are, ninety.
Yeah, you look at the millage difference, but now look at Clemson, and what a pretty town it is.
Easely's a pretty town, too.
Well, we could be prettier. Little lipstick on pig never hurt, Eddie.
This, this chart here is a, uh, just a prediction or, or of what seventy-two and a half mils will be on a two hundred thousand dollar, uh, home. Uh, fifty-four dollars, thirty dollars of that from the, from the stormwater fee, and twenty-four dollars for the three mil increase. Basically, one mil is eight dollars to a two, uh, for a year for a two hundred thousand dollar home. And as mentioned, you know, Easely is the lowest of those there, and I know Clemson has proposed an increase, and I think Liberty has.
Three point, three point eight, I believe.
These are some of the fee schedules that we are changing or updating, it might, some of these might not be being changed, but this is, uh, kind of an update here incorporating the comments from our building official. Incorporating the comments from our building official. Revenue, the three columns on the left are the actuals for those years, the, the fourth column is the budgeted number for the current year. And, uh, we don't have the actuals in, obviously, we got two months left here. And then the projected column on the far right is based on what we see happening in the current year as far as the property taxes and sales taxes, et cetera.
Tom, uh, lower left, grant.
Should be grand.
Grand.
Thank you.
We're gonna get a grant.
It'd be nice to get a grant for twenty million, but.
Um, the nice red figure in the middle of that screen at the bottom, is anybody looking for that money? The seventy thousand?
That's money that should've, where, Ralph? Is that?
The seventy thousand in red.
Is that money that went back into the fund balance that year? Is that what that means?
Twenty-two, twenty-three. Does that one work?
So basically, uh, budgeted use of fund balance, you're indicating it went the opposite way. That's a negative number.
Is that the number that was initially around eighty thousand?
I cannot say, I remember.
I suppose before you're done.
Okay.
The two transactions that account for that are labeled for roll carts for grass.
Get a, uh, mic.
In BSNA, the two transactions that account for that total are roll cart, they're just labeled roll carts for grass. That were paid out of that line item, so it's possible they were coded to the wrong account. Cause they came through our AP system.
When did, um, we start charging for the grass?
These were both, this was July July, uh, July twenty-ninth to twenty-two and August second of twenty-two, this, the two transactions.
Yes. Yeah, so two years, yes.
So this is when it purchased those carts.
This is the first year.
And why it came out of that line, I can't, I can't answer that, I don't know.
Do, do you believe that that seventy thousand was for roll carts for grass?
I, I know that it was.
Okay. I thought, yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe I was misunderstanding.
No, you're right, yeah, it was.
It wasn't stolen.
It was not stolen, no.
Okay.
No.
She just said she doesn't know why it was
Coded to that line.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you. I I thought I was hearing undertone that I wasn't
Oh, no, no.
That I didn't understand what was going for.
No, that's what it went for.
Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. The fund balance, these are items we're, we're funding from the fund balance. Some of these are recurring expenses, some of them are one-time expenses. We try to refrain from putting recurring expenses in the fund balance.
What is the election expense for?
That's the, um,
Runoff.
Election for the change of form of government.
Oh.
Why is that election expense a lot less than the other ones?
Than the runoff, is that the one you're asking?
Well, the
That's what I was confusing.
Oh.
This, this is roughly what the price, the charge was for the runoff. It was, it was around thirty thousand for the general election, and the runoff was another fifteen or sixteen thousand.
So why is it this considered a general election expense?
Well, I think that you're able to add it on to the existing election.
And I think this number was given to us by Pickens County, correct? Did we ask them or not?
When I called about it, they, they weren't sure that we could add it on, so we pulled this number based on the special election cost.
So this would be an add-on cost, if we have to hold a special election, it will be more than that? Okay.
The rewrite of zoning LDR, is that the total for that?
That's the total for, we're trying to spend some of it out of this year and some of it next year, so that's the total we think will be charged next year. It may come back more if we predicted six months, or we gave a six-month moratorium. If it is extended for some reason, then their time is gonna be charged, I'm sure they come back for more.
But at that point That would be the estimate for the total?
For twenty-four, twenty-five.
For next year. Yes, sir.
For this budget year, yeah.
All right, well, will there be more next year?
What?
Based on their time, based on how it unfolds to be.
We
Right.
For the following year being twenty-five, twenty-six, we hope the moratorium, everything's been written by then, and the moratorium will be over.
So is that contract on an hourly basis?
No, sir, it's a, um,
Flat fee?
Not a flat fee, it's a, each item that they're doing in there, which is public notice, public hearing, public, not hearings, but public meetings, getting input, and each one of them has a price, Mario can speak to it more than I can.
It's basically a lump sum, it's, it's, it's broken down.
It's basically a lump sum with the items, which each item broken down. So each item will be, as they do it, they will charge for that item.
So what's the cost in the current budget we have so far?
Five?
Yeah, you said last week we got an invoice. This is half, this is half of the price, he, he says about one-ten total.
Well, that's, that's what I was trying to get at, the total is one-ten?
Okay. Yes, sir.
And this is half of that?
This is the, yeah, next year.
All right, I follow, I follow you.
Okay, I'm sorry. This is the tax comparison based on previous years. You can see the local option sales tax, some years is higher, some years is lower. Based on the numbers we've gotten from the county, we think next year's will be a little bit higher than, than the property tax, that's the local option sales tax that we get. State aid to local subdivision, the state gives this to each municipality. And this is the number they gave us for next year. General fund expenditures per department. You can see police, fire, and public works take seventy-five percent of this, and you can see that from this chart. That's pie chart. These are capital expenditures from the general fund. Vehicle for the planning department, we have a new, uh, building official, building, uh, inspector, and and a code enforcement officer on the way, but building official and building inspector are both here. The firefighter gear, that's, you know, that wears out, it gotta be replaced. The gear dryer, gear washer, if you remember from our presentation, that's, um, when they go out and fight fires, the carcinogens in the smoke and whatnot. They don't have to take them home to their family and wash them, they can wash them here at, uh, at the station. Extraction equipment, they just used that
Saturday?
Saturday. And this is just newer equipment for an extraction. The wildland urban interface, did I get that right, chief?
Sure.
This is a truck that we had, uh, ordered a year or two ago, and we had two hundred fifty thousand dollar budgeted, the county was gonna give us two hundred thousand dollars, total cost four fifty. If you remember about a month ago, we had a fire just right outside city limits in the woods. That, they found out, we found out that that truck would not have done us any good, cause it was just, it couldn't have gotten in the terrain and fought the fire anyway, so the chief thought this, and the fire department thought this would be a better use of the money to get a, a brush truck, a squad truck. It's cheaper, two hundred fifty thousand dollars, the county is, is still gonna give us two hundred thousand dollars, um, that they had promised us before, and we'll put that toward our hundred-foot ladder truck that we are gonna order sometime, either this year or early next year. But as we've talked about that. Questions on that, so it's no, it's no hit to the budget, it's a, basically, it's a
Swap.
Swap from what we were gonna get, and we're gonna get this, this, uh, squad truck, brush truck, and two hundred thousand dollars toward the hundred-foot ladder truck. Some more general fund expenditures, the police, um, renovations, that's the roof, it's been leaking, and that's a new roof, gutter system to keep it away from the, from the, uh, building. That was the estimate, body cameras, the flock cameras, that's only half of what they requested. It's a great firefighting, or fire, police, uh, crime fighting tool, those flock cameras. In-car cameras, updating those, half of the taser fleet being updated. And six vehicles, as we talked last week, the, to be on a good rotation, they would need about ten vehicles every year, but, uh, we can only fund, we can only fund six of them this coming year. Two trucks for the public works. These are items we're not funding that were requested. Affordable radar trailer, the drone, uh, since we're doing, um, some basement refurbishment for, uh, training space, we won't be doing the gym refurbishment. Again, half of the cameras, we're not doing the flock cameras. The, uh, painting and signage of the fire station. The hundred-foot ladder truck, if you remember, that was a three million dollar item. That's the one we're talking about, putting two hundred thousand dollars toward as a down payment. Uh, we're not funding it in this budget. As we talked, we're trying not to spend our fund balance so that we, when we do order this, we can spend fund balance on this truck and not have to borrow as much money. And again, we're going after a million dollar grant with a ten percent match, uh, for this truck too. So we got a lot of things in the works before we actually go after this truck. The hiking bike trail, not funding, but we are funding, uh, hundred thousand dollars. We've applied for a grant through, uh, a federal grant for three million dollar fire station. They said it would look good if we had some money and skin in the game, so we're putting a hundred thousand dollars towards site prep for that new fire station on the north side of town. And that's a coming out of impact fees.
And is, is that hundred thousand, is it, I think we talked, is, is that actually gonna be used prior to knowing if we got the grant? Or is that just like an allocated?
It's just allocated, we won't use it if we don't have the grant. If, if for some reason they, they say go ahead and do it, they being the fed say you need to go ahead and start this, show us that you have skin in the game, then we'll come back to you for that permission. It's the hospitality fund, revenue. It's one of our largest revenue items as far as funds, specific funds. The last thing there you see is budgeted use of fund balance, there's a bond that, uh, when they built, um, the new public works facility and, and some, uh, I guess JB Red Owens. There was a bond taken out, and this is money that was unspent from the bond that was on our books. So we're gonna use some of that to fix some of the bathrooms. Again, this is not part of the millage, it's just money that's in our account now that we're spending. And it's going toward the, uh, road at Haygood Park, and now the ground bathroom, Popefield bathroom, and the three sheds for public works to put their equipment in. And Parks and Rec can put some of theirs in there as well. Right, Eddie?
Yes.
Okay. There, you see the, the ones coming out of the bond, and then we've got some other items, hospitality taxes, our hospitality fund is, is funding. We talked about those at the, um, work session. Remember that fence repair, we saw the picture where the fence was falling down? A liability, really. Dodge truck leases, we're trying to, we are getting out of all the leased cars that have been on the books for several years, this is one that's expiring, so we're just gonna buy it out. And not, uh, not lease anymore. And a brand, a new small truck and a dump truck that we need, that we're not funding, you see the, the playground at JB Red Owens and the turf spreader. Other funds, we'll talk about each one of these, they all have their own rules of where they're funded from and where you can spend the money. We've talked about, uh, a while ago, the stormwater fund, that was the increase from thirty to sixty dollars, and, um, what that will give us, ability to do, is more money in the stormwater fund that we can tackle bigger projects that are causing stormwater problems. You know, the money that we had, I think was a hundred and, around a hundred fifty thousand dollars that was actually usable from the half a million that we were getting every year, cause we was paying most of that back toward the bond that we had borrowed, so now this gives us extra, more money to put toward bigger projects. And I'm sure, um, public works will come up with a prioritized order as we look at those. Do you have your hand up?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Accommodations tax fund, this one and, and the local options, or local accommodations, but those are, uh, funds we use for tourism-related events, and they have their rules on how the money is, is divvied up. This state accommodations tax fund, we have a committee, uh, that looks at all the applicants, and they decide who gets which, uh, what amount of money. Like Little League, um, the, uh, theater, I think there's a couple more. Don't have them off the top of my head, but anyway, they, they apply for this money and we give it out, and that's that distributed to approved organizations piece. Again, local accommodations tax is for tourism-related events. Vicom Advocate Fund, that come from police and court fines, it's not enough to fund this position, so we have to, we have to supplement it from the general fund. Law enforcement fund, this is, uh, seizures, like, uh, property seizures, uh, money, cars, am I John, is that correct?
If you cars are money seized, um, if it's property sold, it doesn't do that fun.
Right. And so this, again, twenty thousand dollars is an estimate, but, uh, could be more, it could be less, but this is kind of based on some typical years. Fireman's fund, that's the one percent money, when you pay your homeowner, uh, insurance fees every year to your, whoever your insurance carrier is. They charge money, uh, that goes into this fund, it's required by the state, the state regulates it and looks at it, and, um, and they give money back to us or to every firefighting district based on their, uh, the appraised value of homes that are being insured in their area of responsibility. So that's eighty-eight thousand dollars is the estimate this year, and that'll be, uh, the budget for that is sent in by the fire department to the state, and they approve it for, based on their, based on their rules for that. Fifth district there is outlined. Questions about that? ARPA fund. If you remember, we had money If you remember, we had money. Approved last year, late last year, to, to pave the parking lot at West End Hall. The new parking lot, excuse me. And our auditor said you couldn't use the ARPA money to do that with. So we looked at what you can use it for, and it's, these are the items. Stormwater is, is a category you can use it for, so we, public works came up with a category, a prioritized list of, of areas. That need stormwater, stormwater issues fixed. And if you add all these up, it comes out to more than three hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars. But we figure if you, if we do all these as one bid, we probably get same economies of scale. There may be money left over, but if there's not enough money, if the actual bid comes back higher than this, then we'll drop them off, starting at the bottom, moving up. Because these, this is a prioritized list. If we have money left over, we'll come back to you with another, another project to spend the money on. But this has to be allocated by December thirty-first, based on all the ARPA rules that were given when, when these feds handed out all this money. Impact fees, this is the current fees that we're charging. This is where we are proposing to spend some of this money next year. The grading of the fire stations, which, which we discussed earlier. The down payment of a hundred thousand dollars toward that hundred-foot platform, which is, again, that's a ten percent match for a million dollars. We're trying to get a million-dollar grant to buy that truck with. Police impact fee, our police impact funds is a hundred thousand dollars toward the new training facility, finishing that off. And then the transportation impact fee, this is using a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of that to finish that parking lot I just talked about over at West End Hall. And this would be a good point, I think, to discuss impact fee, fees.
Okay, according to the ordinance that was passed, the impact fees were to be reviewed every year and increased based on. What was it, Marina, that company?
Tishler.
Yep.
Engineering use record costs.
Yeah. So we really lost two years of additional revenue. I did look on that website, and the amounts are still increasing, but they're talking about, they're expecting them to start coming down. So I think the city's really missed out on the opportunity by not increasing these fees, especially in the past two years. And the ordinance says shall, not may, so that tells me that it should be done yearly. I sent a question off to Mr. Hughes, and you want to just summarize what you told me? Because we're in a time crunch.
Sure.
Thank you.
So Ms. Rainey had asked me some questions about the ordinance that you passed in twenty-one thirteen regarding the requirements for an annual review. And to my knowledge, there has not been an annual review done. This is section four, section B. It says that at least once every year, not later than January one. And prior to your adoption of the annual budget, the administrator or designated shall coordinate the preparation submission of report on the subject of impact fees. So that's what she asked me about. I verified to her, that, that had not, I mean, to my knowledge, had not been done, but it would, it is a requirement that it be done. And then the next question that Ms. Rainey had was under section six. That the appropriation of the impact fees is an item for this council to identify each year. For those appropriation of the impact fee fund. So it just looks like to me that. We just need to be more proactive about following the ordinance. So that, that's generally the questions I think you asked. I think she pointed out a couple of typos. None of which, neither of which affected the validity of the ordinance, so. You know, if we get to doing a recodification project or something, we can, we can, we can correct those typos here.
Is there a way that we could do, like you said in the meeting last week, we could request an amendment to the budget? I'm not exactly sure how you stated it last week, in order to get these impact fees increased?
I'm sure there's, I'm sure you can make an amendment, but what I would like to check, Mr. Hughes. The ordinance says you can, we are to adjust them according to that building index. But in the notes that I have for, from that same company that set all this up. It, it said if you wanna go above the maximum, you've, you've got to hire a consultant again to come and look at all that. So that was a question that was asked to me last week. How do we increase and, and, that's in the notes. It's not in the ordinance, it's in the notes from the same company, so I'd like to know if that's true. Because we're, why, if, if that is true, then I'm thinking maybe we can adjust them as long as we're not below the maximum. Up to the maximum, and then we're, we're stopped at that point until we do another study on it. So if you could check.
Where's the maximum stated? What is the maximum?
It's, it's maximums for the fee, it's in the chart.
Oh, you're talking about the maximum fee of that, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So does the budget ordinance that we're considering tonight, is it, does it comply with the, the ordinance that they be? What, what are the impact fees in the budget that we're about to consider versus last year's budget?
It's no change.
The fees are the same.
So we would be adopting a budget ordinance that's not in compliance with the prior ordinance? With ordinance that says that we must review? Correct?
Well, that's by, my understanding is by January of twenty-five, we have to review it. Uh, or Janu-, yeah, January twenty-five. We weren't, I wasn't here in January first.
Is this the maximum we can charge impact fee?
That's according to our.
The last study.
Last study, it was done.
Right, so to get beyond this, we'd have to have another study?
That's my question, because the ordinance says we can adjust it, but the.
That, that's a, that's a question I haven't considered. I did, I'm not sure about that. I would have to look into that. I think to your question, you could still proceed with adopting your budget. But, and if we needed to do an amendment subsequent to this, we can do that. Budgets can always be amended, you have to just follow the proper procedures to do that.
So if we write what you're, if I'm understanding what you're saying, if we do decide at a later point to raise the impact fees, then we just amend the budget?
That's correct. Through a public hearing process, just like we're doing tonight, and two readings.
But, but just to be clear, the, the budget ordinance that we're considering tonight does not comport to the ordinance that says there has to be yearly review?
Well, the impact fee ordinance stands alone from the budget ordinance. I'm just saying, from the impact fee ordinance itself, it says, before you adopt the budget, you have to do this annual review.
And that's not been done?
To my knowledge, that did, no.
And that would have had to have been done by January first of this year.
So which is why I'm saying, just get it done.
We haven't kept January first of twenty-five.
For the next one.
And then we can amend the budget if we needed to. So for the people in the room and people that might be watching. In case there's, there are questions, the designations. Because some people may have questions where you see that, we'll just take the first line, single family, parks and recreation, seventeen hundred fifteen dollars. And you have police and fire and transportation. And this just goes back to a conversation that I've had with people, and they said, well, why is so much money given to parks and recreation? Is that something that is stipulated in South Carolina state law? As far as the.
Disbursements.
The disbursements per department.
Per department.
In other words, let's just say, for sake of discussion, I mean, when we have all these new people moving into the city easily. No offense to. Um, parks and recreation, but, yeah, you have to have more firemen, you have to have more policemen, and then we have the roads. So somebody would say, well, why wouldn't that just be maybe divvied up equally? I guess what I'm trying to understand is, who and how are those disbursements, or those allotments, those figures determined? Is that by South Carolina state law?
If, if I'm correctly, the impact fees were determined by Tischler and Vice back in twenty-one? It was implemented January first of twenty-two. I may be wrong with those dates by year.
Not when they were.
So, so, so what they did is they came up with the numbers that we had to disperse. Is it state law? I'm not sure, but it's, it's what the regulation says. I would be of the same opinion as you, saying that it seems heavy towards recreation, but that is where one of the major impacts is. I think if we have this reviewed, you can use a different company than Tischler and Vice. Have it reviewed by another company, they may come back with a different number, with different.
Okay, so.
Different allocations. So.
So your answer is, if I'm understanding, even for those that are watching. So you're saying that if we use a different company, there's a potential that those disbursements could be in different percentage?
That's my understanding. They went through, but they have to go, they, they went through a, a review of what we, where we needed the, the monies to be at that time. It's been three, probably comes in on four years now. That numbers could differ now. It could be transportation's number one, it could be fires number one, it could be a totally different way to set it up.
Okay, so there is flexibility.
I believe there is, I believe there is.
That's, if I'm understanding, is that, that's part of the study we paid for?
Correct.
Okay. So they, they look at our needs, our expenditures, and they recommend?
That's the way I understand it.
Okay.
So go back to your, the original question, do, do we have the ability to raise the fee for every home? Or office space, whatever. I don't know the answer to that until we have, we've researched. Since we're already at the maximum for these, for the study that we did. Do we have the ability to raise it above the maximum without doing another study? That's the question. And I see Daniel's reading something there.
Well, I'm just, the annual review portion of the ordinance. That itemizes out what council is to consider as part of the annual review, which doesn't necessarily include raising the amount. So my question, which we still need to address and look at, is what the parameters are in which this council conducts an annual review. And I think, and so twenty twenty-six, I'm assuming we would be, we're gonna go back and do this another, after five years, do another comprehensive study. Which is what we paid for first time. And, but the annual review, which I believe, according to, I'm gonna verify it. Does provide parameters this city, the, the council must do every, once every year. To how the money is being spent. I mean, but I, again, I, I gotta look at that before I can find a clear answer for council on that.
And so going back to something that you said, Mr. Couch, is, is it. Perhaps it's a question for Mr. Hughes. So in order to change our impact fee. Is that state law that we have to get another consultant in? I'm just trying to figure out who, who makes all these rules that we have to comply with.
You have to do the study in order to determine what amount you can, the maximums for the fee.
Okay. And so that means hiring a consultant?
Yeah.
And that's, that comes from state regulations, I suppose, right, our fee.
That's correct.
Otherwise, we could control our growth just by putting a hundred thousand dollars per unit fee, right?
Yeah, it has to be reasonably, you know, there has to be a relation tied to the.
Right.
The comprehensive plan of the city. And, yeah, all, whatever, whatever factors they look, they review and determine in those amounts.
Could you get us a citation on that later? As, as far as that for the impact fee in the study?
Title six, chapter one, something.
Well, it's six, one, and then there's a whole bunch of it, because I was in it all weekend. That'll give it to you.
Yeah, we'll get to it.
But back to your original question, you can pass the budget tonight, unlike, pass first reading without having to change. And then if, if June, July, August, October decide to change the fees, then they can make an amendment to the budget. Here's the debt service that we're currently paying, I just wanna call out, if you'll notice, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar one is the second one from the. Each category, second one from the bottom. One is the principal, one's interest. That one to be paid off in this budget year that we're talking about. And the next one is not paid off until. The nine hundred and three thousand dollar series twenty twenty bond, the second one from the top, which will be. Three budget years from now. So we have a lot of debt here that's still on the books, even though we're paying some off in this budget year. This is the grants funding that we've applied for. Fire station, a fire truck, police was, remind me, police grants?
Counsel was, that's on route currently, had to state funding grant, and possibly RDU out, there's funding for the grant right now.
Okay, thank you. And Parks and Rec funding for grants?
Yes, sir. So some of that is, we did apply for a grant for the dog park area. Um, so we did apply for a grant of about forty-six thousand for dog park amenity upgrades. We did reply, apply for a Duke Energy Grant for a wheelchair accessible swing that we are doing in conjunction with the Youth Learning Institute. And we did receive that fund, so that, that will be installed this summer. We are applying for a nature-based, sensory-based playground. This is about fifty thousand dollars for a grant. And then we are looking at impact fees, so co-funding impact fees with the State Park Grant. Also possible revitalization grant from the Community Block Grant for Woodside Park. And then there's a, and a couple of possible reimbursement opportunities, as well as county ATAX funding for trail enhancement for pedestrian crossways.
Thank you, Chrisman. So that's, that's all I had on the budget. Do I have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I understand that the city has some leases and rooms. Or has it, because I haven't seen leases, that some of them are very minimal. Are those leases, were those leases authorized by, authorized by the council?
Did it come up for a vote from council?
Done by ordinance.
By ordinance?
Mm-hmm.
You're talking about the old one that we're paying on?
The leases, like for the, council chamber.
You're talking about like a West End Hall?
Yeah, West End Hall, the building over at Popefield, where the Legion.
None of those have come up yet. I mean, they all have respect.
You're talking rental property?
I thought she was talking cars.
I thought you were talking cars too. The, the leases, yeah, for the.
Rental agreements.
For the rental agreements.
I'm not sure about the American Legion.
That building was given, we don't own it anymore, I don't believe.
Oh, I thought it was under lease. Chrisman, didn't you tell me this lease?
Are you talking about the Pope Field, the, the industry that I,
Yeah.
City still owns that building, yes ma'am.
It's, it's under lease.
Yeah, we haven't, sorry. Uh, so the city does still own that facility, uh, the fire department's still utilizing it some.
For storage.
And.
It's on, um, but we currently.
So, my question is, are those rental agreements, were they done by ordinance through the council? I wasn't here.
Yeah, I think, I think the renewals, I think there was a, a, I'm sorry, I think there's a, um, provision in the lease agreements that allows for an extension, I don't think they came up, the ones for West End Hall, I know did not come up before council since I've been here, um.
Were they initially done by ordinance, is my question? Because, and, Mr. Hughes, you can help me on this, I have read that a city's, uh, leases has to be done by ordinance.
That's correct.
And that's why I'm asking, were these done by ordinance?
I have to check, I'm not sure if it's ordinance, some of these were renewed and so the, the original ordinance might've been a year sometime past.
Wouldn't the one have to be done by ordinance as well?
So, do you have some of the permits in that is relevant, I guess, that might not be part of the council?
Yeah, so if, if, if the ordinance approved by,
There would be a.
So if the, if the original lease approved by council, provided for an extension, the, the right of the less C to extend it, then it would not have to come back to this council for reapproval. Um, which underscores the need for council to make sure when they approve these leases that it's under terms, which allows them to control the future lease options. So, I'd have to review the lease, we'd have to review it to see, for sure.
And some of those are real old, there's some of that's been done ten or more years ago.
Yeah.
Okay, we do have, um, hearing, public hearing that we're going to at six thirty, the, um, council meeting starts at seven and we'll have a public hearing there, so there will be the opportunity for questions there as well, so, um,
And make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor of adjourn?
Get out of this house, boys.
Here we go.
What time is the hearing, mayor?
Seven.
Seven.